Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take a roll.
Mr. Bekowski here. Mr. Bonnerati. Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulas.
I'm here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakaradi-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
President Katina.
Here.
As of right now, Mr. Bonnerati is present. We now have 14 members present.
All of tonight's proclamations, we read into the record. 12932-24.
A proclamation recognizing and congratulating Christopher W. Lochner on his retirement as municipal manager of Hampton Township, sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio.
12933-24.
A proclamation recognizing Bauer Hill Volunteer Fire Department's 100th anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
Please add Councilman Paul Messina to that as well. 12934-24.
A proclamation recognizing Joe Schwan for his 50 years of dedicated service to the Holiday Park Volunteer Fire Department, sponsored by Councilmember Nakaradi-Chapkus.
12935-24.
A proclamation recognizing Grace Memorial Presbyterian Church for over 150 years of ministry and declaring the third weekend of February to be Reverend Henry Highland Garnett's Weekend in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
12936-24.
A proclamation recognizing the week of February 5th through 9th, 2024, is National School Counseling Week in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Messina.
12937-24.
A proclamation recognizing and congratulating Alex David Barker on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Messina.
Okay. Public comment on agenda items?
We have a few. First up is George Janosko.
George Janosko, J-A-N-O-C-S-K-O, 4404 Jefferson Avenue, Munthall, Pennsylvania. I know the drill from being here. I'm here this evening before council to express my view that I recommend to you with every possible fiber of my being, every possible enthusiasm, the confirmation of Rosalyn Guy McCorville is our next county solicitor. I've known Ros for 30 years. She's a colleague, a professional colleague, but I regard her as a close friend. I can tell you from personal experience, she's an outstanding attorney. She's a leader. She's a problem solver. She works well with people. She listens to people. She is everything that you would want as our next county solicitor. It's because of those qualities that when I assumed the position of solicitor, one of the things that I wanted to do was make sure that there was a smooth transition and to make sure that we were prepared for the future of the Law Department. That's why I asked her to serve as the kind of untitled first assistant, to be with me, to represent me, to be someone whom I could rely upon for advice and counsel in discharging my duties. And when the opportunity presented itself, I encouraged her to apply for this position because I knew she was ready and she had the qualities that would be necessary to fulfill the position. There is a need for continuity in any phase of government and more so with Law Department. She provides that continuity. And the fact that there are so many people here from the Law Department that are here supporting her and desiring her confirmation to serve as her boss, I think is a testimony to her. In conclusion, I think that you would be well-served to listen to her. The Law Department is frankly, an untapped resource that's not been utilized enough by this body. There are appropriate ways to do that, under the Home Rule Charter and our Administrative Code. But I urge you that you support this and confirm her in the position of county solicitor. She is the best choice. She's ready. She's the person you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Corey Roma.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be speaking to you all this evening rather than just spectating as I usually do. For those who don't already know me, my name is Corey Roma. I am a resident of Crafton Borough and I'm speaking today to strongly encourage you to approve the appointments of Mr. Al Nasir, Ms. Griffin, and Mr. Perkins to the jail oversight board. We are currently experiencing a changing of the guard here in Allegheny County. An entirely new generation of politicians now occupy many of the most powerful positions in our local government. And this presents us with a unique opportunity to rebuild the inner workings of our county government into one that is more inclusive, dynamic, and full of diversity of both people and experience. Approving these appointments takes a giant leap towards making that opportunity a reality and would add a new blend of legal expertise and criminal justice reform advocacy to a critically important board. And with the appointment of Mr. Al Nasir in particular, almost a quarter of the membership of the jail oversight board will be made up of formerly incarcerated individuals who are a critically important voice and component in working towards making the jail a much safer and rehabilitative institution. I'd also like to quickly give my thoughts on three other items on this evening's agenda. First, I would strongly urge you all to back Councilmembers Grisbeck, Pritzio, and Hallam's motion to encourage less restrictive zoning practices. As a proponent of urbanism and inclusive zoning myself, I think this would be a great first step on the path to alleviating our affordable housing crisis, encouraging people to move here while also not pricing out current residents, and hopefully expedite the addition of new housing stock to the old communities of our county. Second, I would encourage you all to approve the motion to urge the General Assembly to pass HB 1972 in relation to the PIAA. Alloquita, the source of this controversy, happens to be my hometown. And I can tell you, you know, I spent 20 out of the 24 years of my life there. And I can tell, if I can tell you anything about my hometown and where I come from, football is a part of the foundation of our community. And it is something that the whole town works towards on the result, sorry. It's something the whole town works towards, and you can see the results of that work. I get it. Losing sucks, especially at such bitch margins, sorry to brag. But the PIAA forcing my old high school, where my graduating class had 60 people, to compete against schools like Moon with graduating classes of 300-plus kids is ridiculous and unfair. The PIAA needs reformed and classification policies reviewed. I deeply appreciate this council's solidarity in the matter. Third and final point, I'll try to get through this one quickly. I encourage you all to disapprove of the motion to the opposition of the sale of U.S. Steel. While I understand a lot of the anxieties around the sale, considering corporate mergers with foreign companies contributed to the demise of the region's steel industry in the past, this is a completely different situation we now face. Given the lack of other well-intentioned prospective buyers, Nippon's commitment to maintain U.S. Steel's corporate and production facilities in the region, and in particular, its willingness to make crucial investments to the plant in the Mon Valley, to make crucial investments in the Mon Valley and help alleviate the perpetual scourge of pollution our fellow residents have experienced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Next up is Miracle Jones.
57 years ago, I worked for a metal product and plate company. Steel was coming in from Korea. Hello. My name is Miracle Jones, M-I-R-A-C-L-E-J-O-N-N-E-S. I'm here to ask the council to approve the appointments of Muhammad Nasir, which I know as Manny, to the jail oversight board. I know Manny as a friend and a colleague. I'm also his boss, and so I get to see him in multifacities in his life, as someone who's been impacted by the criminal justice system and who has spent the past few years dedicated to advocating for changes. I believe he has the personal expertise as well as the professional expertise that is needed on the jail oversight board. He has someone who, as Corey was saying, has been impacted. He's also someone who has come before y'all to talk about changes that are necessary and needed, and I believe he provides valuable insight to the board. I also ask you to approve the solicitor as well. We need people within Allegheny County who are experienced, who are work, ready to do innovative work to make this county livable for all. So I ask that you approve all of the appointments for the jail oversight board as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Next up is Jasiri X.
Peace. My name is Jasiri X. I'm co-founder and CEO of One Hood Media. I'm also a resident of East Liberty. I'm here also to encourage the appointment or approval of Muhammad Ali Nasir, somebody who I've known for a very long time. I think it's also appropriate that it's come during Black History Month. One person that you're going to learn about during Black History Month that we always learn about is Dr. Martin Luther King. His most famous letter that he ever wrote came from jail, right? So we talk about the civil rights movement, you talk about how the jail had like played this role in the civil rights movement, and often that was a punitive role, right? As we move from the crack epidemic to the opioid crisis, it's the hope that with this language, we start to look at the jail not as a punitive thing, but more of a rehabilitative thing. And I think Manny is the perfect person, if that's the direction we want to go. This is somebody who, out of his own pocket, came to the jail weekly, making sure that people that came out were treated in a way where he looked at their humanity. He does the same thing in the house's community. And so to me, you know, another black leader I think about during this month is somebody named Jesus, right? And we say, what would Jesus do? And how would Jesus treat the least of these? And if you say, are you comparing Manny to Jesus? Yes, I am. Because I would think that if those people are coming out of the jail and in most need, that somebody, if Jesus were here, he would look towards their humanity and not towards what they did before. And to me, it's that spirit at which we really need to look at folks that are there because they're dealing with addiction, they're dealing with mental illness, they're dealing with houselessness, right? So I hope that we're moving into this place where we're looking at the humanity of human beings. I think Manny represents that. The last thing I'll say is, today is February 6th. Two famous world leaders were born on this day, Bob Marley and Ronald Reagan. Well, at One Hood, you know, we're an organization that are artists and activists. We feel like we want to take the spirit and the role of Bob Marley and appointing Manny to this position for us would be our redemption song. Peace.
Next. Next up is Josh Thieler.
My name is Josh Thieler, J-O-S-H-T-H-I-E-L-E-R. I'm here to speak on the nomination of Muhammad Ali Nasir to the Jail Oversight Board Committee. I am a resident of Pittsburgh, and I love this city. While I love this city known as the city of bridges, I also see it as the city of gaps. Pittsburgh, America's most livable city, and Allegheny County Jail, among the deadliest jails in the country, highest documented use of force incidents in the state, severely lacking in medical and mental health care. Those are big gaps between a PR narrative and a reality that too many of our neighbors have to live and die with. There are gaps between the people on the J O B and our family and neighbors that they are overseeing in the A C J. We have a sheriff responsible for serving warrants and arresting people, judges who deny bail and sentence our fellow Pittsburghers to prison, and politicians. Whereas Manny is a black man who has been held in that jail and actually knows what it's like inside and out. He stands in the gaps of your knowledge and experience. When the Smithfield Street shelter closed and our local officials spoke strongly that there were beds at other shelters for all those being kicked out of Smithfield, even though all the other shelters were already at full capacity, Manny was there feeding people, helping them get where they needed to go, and helping them find shelter. He stands in the gaps by showing humanity and compassion. There are gaps in transitioning to life back outside the jail. People walk outside of the doors of the A C J without means to get home, to contact family and friends, to feed and clothe themselves. Manny stands outside that jail every week to welcome them back outside and provide them with the kindness and meet their basic needs. There are gaps in our vision, where we try not to see those living outside on our streets when we are driving to work or going to a fancy show at the Benidorm, where we don't want to see the cracks in our education system and justice system that so many people fall through. Manny sees those gaps in our vision. He goes and finds our neighbors that have fallen through those gaps in mental health care, education, affordable housing, and justice systems. He sees them. He meets them where they are and provides them with anything he can and shines light on them for the rest of us to wake up and see them as human beings who deserve better. Manny knows how easy it can be for any of us to find ourselves sitting in that jail or sleeping on these streets. He fights for those already there and fights the systemic problems to keep people from experiencing those situations. In this city of bridges, Manny is a bridge. In this city of champions, Manny is a champion of the people, showing compassion and humanity. He is the exact person I would want fighting on my behalf or my loved one's behalf. He is the exact type of person I would want filling cracks in the system and gaps in our humanity that the rest of us would rather not see or be reminded of. Manny is a man who stands in the gaps. We don't deserve him, but there is no one I would rather have as a member of that board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Last up on agenda topics is Tanisha Long.
Hello, Tanisha Long. I'm here to speak on behalf of the hopeful affirmation of Muhammad Ali Nasir, Muhammad Ali Nasir will drop his government name, Manny, to the jail oversight board. When I go to the jail oversight board meetings, I've been going for years now, one of the things I always notice is that no one on the jail oversight board looks like me with the same experiences I've had. There aren't people of color on that board who have been inside the Allegheny County Jail. And as it stands, there's only one person who is formerly incarcerated on the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board. The way our state statute is written, judges are guaranteed two spots on the jail oversight board without council approval. A sheriff is guaranteed a spot on the jail oversight board without council approval. I think it's a bit ridiculous that I have to come here and beg for approval of somebody who is so deserving and actually has the experience that the jail oversight board needs. Lived experiences are expertise. It makes you an expertise not only in your experience, but the experiences that other people may have and share. We don't have that on the board outside of Bethany Hallam, and we need that. We need the person who stands outside of the jail every week, handing out money, Narcan, clothing, supplies, to people who are just coming out and just want someone to acknowledge them, someone who knows people by name and not DOC number, somebody who shows up for their court cases. One of the most shocking things that I heard at a jail oversight board, which says a lot because I've been going for two years, is a judge said, "I've never set foot inside of the jail." This is a judge who's been on the bench for almost 20 years, someone who sentences people to the Allegheny County Jail, does not even know what the inside of it looks, never did a tour, never walked around it on their second month at the jail oversight board, and hasn't even checked on a single person in there. We need someone who's dedicated to going inside that jail and making sure our people are all right. We need someone who doesn't work for a carceral system, someone who doesn't work for a court system going inside that jail, someone who's not elected into that position, someone who's from the community, and that's what these community member spots are for. My community looks like Manny. My community doesn't look like judges. Those are people who sentenced my community to jail. And while I'm on the topic of jail oversight board appointments, I would also like to recommend Rob Perkins and Barbara Griffin. Because if we're going to have two judges on the jail oversight board, we need two people who work in legal defense and who know people in another light, who know people by name and who work to get them out of the jail. That's what we need for our jail oversight board, and I hope that it'll be no problem approving these overwhelmingly qualified candidates for Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now, presentate, or I'm sorry, approval minutes, 12938-24.
It's a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All of the appointments are going to be referred to the Committee on Appointment Review, so please read all the titles together.
12929-24 is approving the appointment of Donna Gardner to the Friends of the Park for Boyce Park for a term to be effective through February 6, 2027, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary. 12930-24 is approving the appointment of Russell Giancolli to the Accountability Conduct and Ethics Commission for a term to be effective through February 6, 2029, sponsored by Councilmember DiMarco. And 12931-24 is approving the appointment of Maria Schwartz to Friends of the Park for Boyce Park for a term effective through February 6, 2027, sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio.
Unfinished business. Committee on the Appointment Review for the second reading, 12902-24.
Approving the appointment of Barbara Griffin to the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board for a term effective through December 31st, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi-Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on January 30th, 2024, and affirmatively recommends Ms. Griffin to this board. I would like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Do we need a roll call vote? Or is a voice vote a fine?
I'm cool with a voice vote.
Voice vote? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Member Nakaradi-Chapkus.
Approving the appointment of Muhammad Ali Nasir to the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board for a term effective through December 31st, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Member Nakaradi-Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on January 30th, 2024, and affirmatively recommended Mr. Nasir to this board, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 12909-24.
Approving the appointment of Rob Perkins to the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board for a term effective through December 31st, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Member Nakaradi-Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on January 30th, 2024, and affirmatively recommended Mr. Perkins to this board, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 12910-24.
Approving the reappointment of Mark Forster to the Allegheny County Housing Authority for a term effective through December 31st, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi-Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on January 30th, 2024, and affirmatively recommended Mr. Forster to the authority, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Go ahead. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Abstained.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakaradi-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
President Katina.
Yes.
Ayes 13, noes zero, with one abstention and one member not present. The motion carries.
12911-24.
Approving the appointment of Mandy Steele to the Allegheny County Housing Authority for a term effective through December 31st, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Member Nakaradi-Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on January 30th, 2024, and affirmatively recommended Representative Steele to this authority, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Approving the appointment of Kyle Chintalapoli to the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County for a term effective through December 31st, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi-Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on January 30th, 2024, and affirmatively recommended Mr. Chintalapoli to the Redevelopment Authority. I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 12928-24.
Approving the appointment of Rosalyn Guy McCorville as solicitor of Allegheny County, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Member Nakaradi-Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on January 30th, 2024, and affirmatively recommended the appointment of Ms. Guy McCorville as solicitor, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Any liaison reports this evening? Seeing none, moving on to new business, 12939-24.
A resolution providing for a program of temporary exemption from county real property taxes for improvements, including repairs, construction, or reconstruction made on industrial, commercial, or business property in a deteriorated area in the city of Pittsburgh, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
That will go to the Committee on Economic Development and Job Creation, New Business, 12926-24.
Motion of the Council of Allegheny County opposing the sale of U.S. Steel to Nippon, sponsored by Councilmembers Walton, Pritzio, and Paul Mary.
That will go to Economic Development and Job Creation as well, 12940-24.
Motion of the Council of Allegheny County encouraging local municipalities to adopt less restrictive zoning practices, sponsored by Councilmembers Grisbeck, Pritzio, and Hallam.
That will go to the Committee on Housing and Homelessness, 12941-24.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny County urging the expeditious passage of HB 1972 introduced by Representative Rob Mattsy in the Pennsylvania House for Representatives that will look to comprehensively overhaul the structure and authority, review the finances, and examine the continued viability of the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association, sponsored by Councilmembers Paul Mary, Macy, Pritzio, Hallam, Bekowski, and Grisbeck.
Councilmember Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I brought this up because I don't think there's enough blowback to the PIAA from this area. I don't know where the WPIA stands, but they haven't done a darn thing, as far as I know, to rectify what I consider a horrible situation. Because they're so successful over there, alloquita, now they're to be punished because they have wonderful athletic teams, and those kids are doing well scholastically, too. And they finally got a new stadium worthy, worthy of their prowess on the field. Where is the WPIA complaining and bringing this issue to the PIAA? All they're worried about over there is what the schools are over in the other part of the state. We have to speak up, ladies and gentlemen, we have to speak up here, Allegheny County in the western part of the state, and saying, let's protect our rights and let's protect our kids. It's so unfair to have this student body over there graduating 40, 50, 60 kids, and maybe having 30 or 40 kids on a team, and they're going to play teams that have 90, 90, 100 kids on a team. It's ridiculous. It's about time we stand up to the PIAA and say, hey, wake up. It's time to be fair. This is very unjust. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in, is there any discussion?
I'd like to be added as a cosponsor, please. Can I do that?
Yep. Anyone else?
I would.
You, Councilman Fatoulas, add me as well. Councilman Klein? Go ahead.
Probably might want to ask.
Is there anyone that doesn't want to? We'll move on from that point. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Notification of contracts?
We've none.
Okay. Public comment on general items?
We have several. First up is Brandon Schmidt.
Thank you, council members. My name is Brandon Schmidt, B-R-A-N-D-O-N-S-C-H-M-I-D-T. I'm here today to speak to you about the proposal that you all submitted to give all the volunteer firefighters $500 tax credit. Just for some substance, I've been a volunteer firefighter in Allegheny County for 22 years. Currently, I serve as the fire chief proudly of Rainbow Volunteer Fire Company in White Oak. I also work for a career fire station, full-time, part-time for another fire station. Basically, I want you all to know, I've dedicated my life to the fire service in this county, all right? And I'm happy that you're all talking about this and you want to do something, but this $500 is not it, okay? This $500 is not going to get us anybody new, and the ones that are on the fence about leaving, it's not going to keep them either. This problem is many decades in the making, and while this might have been a good incentive 30 years ago, 40 years ago, when the problem started, we're past that. We're treading water right now. You know, quoted in the news, council president, you were quoted as saying that there's about 100 to 125 volunteer fire departments in Allegheny County. I'm here to correct you, that's actually about 180. And if you add in the volunteer EMS, hazmat, you know, that 1.5 to 2 million that you were talking about, it's going to be a lot more. Now, if you are going to do something, that 1.5 to 2 million could make a big difference elsewhere, and we could spend that better. $500 to everybody is not how you do it, but $2 million towards working towards a solution, that could get us somewhere. I sit on a committee of the State Fire Commissioner's Office, and I've sat on Board of the Future of Fire Service with Connect, and, you know, I've had the opportunity to speak to a lot of different fire departments across the state. And the best incentive that you're giving their volunteer firefighters is money, okay? In some way, shape, or form, a stipend, a different incentive, but they're giving them real money, not $500. You know, asking us for help and input on this topic is how you're going to get some of your best ideas. Ask the firefighters themselves. That's where you're going to get ideas on this, all right? I thank you all for letting me talk about this because I deeply do care about the volunteer fire service in this county, and I want to see us do something. So let's get together and actually take some time and make a change to help the volunteer fire service in Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next? Next up is Kelly Morenko Strain.
Next?
Next up is John Silvestri.
Not here.
Also not here.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Wait.
Oh, I didn't see the second page. Okay.
Next?
Loretta Gillespie.
Next?
Jeremy Kazaz.
On March 21, 1910, 41 Pittsburghers were arrested as part of a corruption scandal, which included elected council members who had been running grifting schemes for years in Pittsburgh as part of the local political machine. I want to come to you tonight to talk about ethics codes. I believe they're more than a set of recommended guidelines. I believe strongly they represent a pact with the public as a promise for you all to serve us with honor and uphold the principles of our democracy. Self-governing isn't a powerful tool to maintain that promise, sending a clear message to the public that this council is vigilant in preserving the public's trust. I draw your attention to legal and judicial ethics codes, where it is not enough for officers of the court to merely follow the law, but it is important that they avoid any appearance of corruption and impropriety. I think it is important that members of this council, as public servants, hold one another to no lesser standards. I trust that in the 110 years that passed since the scandals that plagued Pittsburgh's political machines that I referenced earlier, that our elected officials have moved past that era of grift, corruption, and cover-ups, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Last up is Jacob Poole.
Good evening. I'm Jacob Poole, formerly from Eastern Europe, the Eastern European Union, where my name was Zoltan Levante Jacob. I'm here because I wanted to discuss the scary face of child trafficking and forced labor in the Pittsburgh area. And it's because I'm in the room, and it is assumed that everybody has moms and dads, and everybody made normally, and that every person in this room is a human being made normally. But I'm telling you, I'm not. I was in a facility in Eastern Europe in the 90s during the conflicts when the government from Sweden stabilized, where Pittsburgh-based companies were operating there, gathering up children into facilities, making children for money in facilities, to give me names such as Zoltan, Joel, Levante, Jacob, to bring us here and give us to people like you would with puppies and cats. And I'm here because that's what people done. I was in this facility till aged 12, with hundreds to thousands of children, and they were getting given names like Zoltan, Joel, Levante, Jacob, and Eastern European names from Hungary, Slovakia, Romania, Ukraine, Czechoslovakia, Yugoslavia, Serbia, Bulgaria, and they brought us here one by one and gave us to people like you would with puppies. So I'm in this room, and it's not an assumed fact that I have a mom and dad, because I was made for money and sold on a market, for people in the Pittsburgh area who paid for it. I want an Eastern European child with the name Zoltan, Joel, Levante, Jacob to parade around Pittsburgh like you would with a puppy, you know? Like, I bought this dog for $5,000, some British Beagle or whatever. And that's how I'm in this room. So it is not an assumed fact that that's a reality in Pittsburgh. And given what I've been saying and giving out that I handed out 5,000 flyers, 50,000 flyers in the last two, three years, all over Allegheny County and Westmoreland County, because I was first brought to Ligonier and then to Pittsburgh, and paraded through PNC Bank, University of Pittsburgh, Carnegie Mellon Facilities, every place where you could put my name, Zoltan Levante Jacob, from Eastern Europe, and say, hey, we got one of those guys up here. Because we made them at the facility, covered it up, did some smoke around it to make it legit, and we rescued them. So that's how I'm here. And given I gave out 50,000 flyers in the last three years, I don't have a single liar behind me defending me.